Okay, well with that, it's 4:00 PM on Tuesday, November 17, 2020. And I will call to order the work session of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board. For the record, I'm going to call roll before we proceed into today's agenda to, once again, have a workshop around the Faculty Administrative Collaboration Team Presentation and Document. So with that, I understand Ms. Munoz is unable to join us today. Mr. Hendrix is not with us. And Mrs. McGrath, are you present? Elza, do you have her on mute or unmute?
No, she's unmuted. I've texted her.
Okay, thank you. We'll come back to her. Dr. Norene.
I'm here.
Great. Mr. Sarr.
Me too.
Welcome. Dr. Thor.
I'm here.
I'll go back to Mrs. McGrath. Mrs. McGrath. With that, I'm going to move forward with the meeting showing that four board members are present. Mr. Hendrix absent, and for some reason, I'm not hearing from Mrs. McGrath or Ms. Nguyen if they join us. Would you note that for the record, Elza?
Yes.
Thank you. And so, again, today, we have some members of the Faculty Administrative Collaboration Team present to clarify some of the answers, or to clarify questions, I guess, from our earlier presentation work session regarding the proposed faculty agreement. We did stipulate that we might convene a couple times in work sessions as we ponder through the very large document that was presented to us.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes?
Sorry, I got kicked out like you said you were going to, and I'm back. It's Mrs. Nguyen.
Okay. Glad you're with us. And back to Mrs. McGrath. I'm sorry, I'll continue here in a minute. Any more on Mrs. McGrath?
No.
Okay. Anyway, as I was stating, we had stipulated with there might be a few work sessions regarding this agreement, so everyone can be clear and have anything that they are curious about clarified. So this is our second work session regarding this topic. And with that, I'm going to turn this over to you, Dr. Gonzalez, to introduce the speakers for today. Thank you.
Thank you, President Sullivan, members of the Governing Board, CEC, and guests that are with us today. We do appreciate the opportunity to continue the conversation on our fact document that we've been working on for some time now. And we offered a window of opportunity for questions to be asked, and I believe that those questions had been forwarded on to an email account that was created for holding those. And so I'll turn it over at this point to, I think I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Peterson and perhaps Eddie Jenna to lead us forward in this conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. President Sullivan, members of the Board, Dr. Gonzalez, CEC members, and attendees, thank you for, thank you first and foremost for the time you've taken and invested in reviewing the document and the work that we've done to bring you the faculty agreement for '21-'22. We, as we mentioned in our last presentation, we did set up an email to capture questions. We didn't get very many questions in advance. We did get a request from the last presentation to provide some examples in order to be able to compare what normally would be found in a document at similar institutions. Mrs. McGrath has specifically asked for, and so for the Board, we provided the information on Arizona State University. It is not packaged in a document, one document, as it is for us. So we provided the links to the various sites where that information can be accessed. We were also requested to find information on Grand Canyon University. Unfortunately, as a private institution, we were not able to find policy documents that were publicly accessible. And then what we did to provide additional information in setting that context was to provide three documents similar in format to our document from other large community college systems in Florida, Utah, and Texas. You'll see there Miami Dade, Salt Lake, and Alamo Community College Districts. So that is the request that we received, the information we were able to gather and provide back to the Board in advance. We are excited to be here this evening to answer any other questions you may have in regards to the document, recognizing, as President Sullivan said, it is a larger document. And we recognize that it will take some time to work through all aspects of the work we've done.
Thank you, Dr. Peterson. I don't know if Mrs. McGrath is back on. She was on, and she may have stepped away for a reason. I know you, one of the things we had said was that you, there would be no answer to a particular question until we were all together in the public forum. And as you uncovered the ASU document, and you said there are others that are similar to ours, were these documents that you did review prior to putting together our own agreement?
President Sullivan, no. So we, as we did our work, we really drew, again, from our, framing from our initial work from the Residential Faculty Policy Document, the most recent version of that, and then working to build a new document that incorporated our Adjunct Faculty Handbook. So we really built from the existing tools that we had, and then putting them into a new form, and then modifying, adjusting it to meet the needs as we move forward. These documents were more of an example to demonstrate that the types of things that we find in our document are comparable to the topics and areas covered in, like, documents at other similar institutions.
Okay, thank you. I understand Mrs. McGrath is on, and I believe unmuted. Mrs. McGrath, you were, these were your requests, I believe, particularly, did you have an opportunity, or are you going to be perusing these documents for further questions?
Pardon me, am I going to be what?
Are you going to be reviewing these documents for, excuse me, future questions?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anything that comes to mind for you quickly in regard to this, since these were, again, delivered in response to your inquiry?
Nothing more than what I said before. It was highly slanted towards the controlling the district.
Okay, so perhaps after you look at these other documents for form and substance, you might have further questions?
Okay. The document comes from the Internet.
You know what? You broke up and down for me, and it could just be my receipt of the information that you said.
Yes, the information that we received on the Internet in emails.
Yes, ma'am. If you'd like, just let me know, and I can print those for you.
That would be very helpful.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you. And thank you to your team, Dr. Peterson, for responding. What other questions surfaced for you that we can talk about?
Is that directed at Mrs. McGrath?
No, that was directed to Mr. Peterson or Dr. Jenna.
Thank you.
Oh, I apologize, President Sullivan. So those were the primary questions that we received. We did have some questions that we answered in the previous session. We did not receive any additional outstanding questions, but are prepared if there are any that Board members would like us to go through now.
Okay, so I just want to be clear. Any questions you received on your website need to be answered publicly. So if you did respond in an email, they still need to be stated, obviously. Do you have those questions in front of you to respond?
Yes, so the questions that we received, the first question was, who would be responding to these questions? And so we responded back that we had a subgroup of members of the fact team that would review. And so we, as a team, reviewed and then crafted the responses, that they were then sent to the Board Secretary, Ms. Macias, for distribution back to the Governing Board, so that we were following our open meeting law protocol. So that's the question.
Right. Yeah, we just need you to answer those, repeat those questions here and answer them in this meeting. Okay? So that was one question. Another question. Did you have others that came on the email that you could read out loud and give us your response?
That was our, that was our question that we received.
Okay. I expect that perhaps, since time has passed, there's some other questions that folks may want to ask. And with that, I'll go through the normal process and start. Mrs. McGrath, did you have any other questions?
Can you hear me?
Now I can. Do you have any other questions for right now?
No.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Norene.
I don't have any at this moment, but I have some coming up.
This is your opportunity. Okay, do you want me to come back to you? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, yeah, just go back.
Okay. Mr. Sarr, did you have any comments or questions after further perusal?
Well, I had a question answered, actually, by the Chancellor regarding the contract. And my question to him was, is there, is this the contract that all faculty members work under, or are there other contracts for individual faculty? And I'll let him verify his answer, but he said, no, this is the contract that all faculty members, now including, I'm assuming, adjuncts, will be working under. So I'll ask the Chancellor to kind of verify that, if you would.
Thank you, Dana.
President Sullivan, Mr. Sarr, that would be correct. This agreement covers all of the faculty, unlike CEC that have individual contracts that each sign individually with provisions within that contract that must be followed. These are the overarching provisions and policies that guide our faculty.
And it's a question I've asked for years now. Does that include the faculty members of the Temple working at the old Skill Center?
President Sullivan, Mr. Sarr, our instructors at the Skill Center are not considered residential faculty. They operated under a different policy up until a few years ago, and then had been combined under the All-Employee Policy Manual.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And for some additional information as to why it works that way is that our clock hour instructors are 12-month employees, 40-hour-per-week employees, and the nature of those programs are quite different from our typical academic programs that require the flexibility to open and to close programs to meet the needs of industry in a hurry.
Yeah, you've heard me on this sermon so many times, I'm not going to repeat it. But I just feel that all faculty members should have that option, that want to work in a different way than what the faculty agreement allows them to. So I just feel disappointed that faculty members don't have that choice. Thank you.
President Sullivan, Mr. Sarr, if I can understand that interest that you're expressing, it's one that allows for flexibility in the number of months or the time of year in which faculty are able to work?
Yeah, among others. I mean, the type of classes and how they teach the classes, and whether or not they can work for more than a year without getting somebody's permission to do something outside the box. We have a lot of faculty members that have talked to me about that, and we put together a one-size-fits-all document again that gives us very little flexibility out there in the long term. Obviously, we've added some things regarding innovation, but it falls back to a group of faculty members to determine whether it wants to be go beyond a year. And to me, that just makes no sense. So, I mean, again, I've said that for years, so change my mind.
President Sullivan, Mr. Sarr, thank you for those additional comments. One of the additions to the fact document that I would say that wasn't present before was the allowing for innovation in, you know, through a memorandum of understanding that allows for a temporary opportunity to try something new and different. And if then it's seen as something that is viable and useful and can work across our district, then you might see that fall into the larger agreement thereafter. But the space for innovation is there, and we haven't tried that yet. I'm sure there'll be an opportunity, as soon as we implement this document, to try that and to work through that. But at least that opportunity exists now. So it may not be as wide as you've imagined, but there is something there that allows for some flexibility in doing things differently.
And I appreciate that, although inside that same group of paragraphs, it says that if it, in one year, it goes to a faculty committee to determine if that can proceed forward. And my feeling is, well, here we go again, one-size-fits-all. If the faculty feel that it's contrary to what they want, they can tell that the faculty member knows. Nice try, but we're not going to approve that. That just makes no sense.
Yeah. President Sullivan, Mr. Sarr, I would really like to think that that would actually work in a different type of manner and different order in that it allows for the space for innovation. And once that we can, we can prove that the innovation works, then it can become a part of this document in a more permanent manner, allowing for that flexibility thereafter, rather than to be used as a tool to stifle innovation.
May I ask a follow-up question or make a follow-up comment to that? If I could, Dana, or do you have further comment on that before I jump in?
All yours. Thank you.
Well, no, I'm going to come back to you, because I don't, are all your questions finished? I just wanted to comment on this one. And so what we encountered here with COVID this time was that we needed to all of a sudden adapt and be really flexible in new ways. How can this agreement, and maybe I'm missing nuance, or I haven't read it thoroughly enough, but how does this agreement allow for that sort of adaptability if we want to rapidly change the environment and have to accommodate faculty, adjunct, resident, you know, permanent residential or instructors? What kind of adaptability does this document allow for us to change quickly in, you know, point in time? Can someone answer that for me, please?
Sure. President Sullivan, I'll defer to Dr. Peterson or any member of the fact team to elaborate on that particular article.
So, President Sullivan, that's a great question. One of the benefits that we tried to build into Article VI was that flexibility. Well, you'll see if you, in looking at the document, in Section 6.1 Memorandum of Understanding, we've created a clearer process by which these memorandum of understanding can be implemented, so that would allow us for changes to the faculty agreement in response to urgent circumstances.
How would you define urgent? I mean, what equals urgent?
So, for example, an example that happened this year for an MOU was in response to Department, Department Chair pay for evening supervision, because that was fundamentally changed in our new environment. So it gave us an opportunity to jump right in and make a modification. This makes that process easier moving forward. So if we find, for example, that next year pandemic issues require us to, again, look at changing how we provide instruction in a way that would modify how we're asking faculty to work or be organized, this would allow us to step in and quickly make those changes in a consistent way for all colleges.
And when you, how do you define quickly? I mean, as in a week, a month, tomorrow?
So it would, it would depend on the level of need, so when the decision needed to be made. I would say we demonstrated this past year that we could make decisions very quickly within a week, within a couple weeks, based upon our timeline for how changes needed to move forward with a pandemic. So this, the memorandum of understanding allows us for that quick turnaround of, you know, of a week, of a couple of weeks, that we might see something coming in the future and have a little bit more time to talk through, which could give us a little bit more time to talk through. But this gives us that, the ability to be more responsive.
Okay, thank you. Going back to you, Mr. Sarr, and what challenges do you see with that framework, if any?
Well, the document's been around for a long time, and I'll grant that there are some significant changes in it, especially working with the adjuncts. But it's still primarily a one-size-fits-all way of managing how we deliver instruction to students. And I don't think we're in a position today, and certainly in the future, that that's going to work anymore. I do believe in consistency. I understand that. But I think that we are stifling a lot of innovation out there by forcing them to go through the bureaucracy that we've established in this document. I think it's more important that we give faculty that want to a freer hand in doing things that they feel as professionals that are benefiting students, whether it's creating classes that go beyond 16 weeks, whether it's creating a class structure that extends over the summer, things that meet the students' needs that we have today. Because this is a different group of students than we had back in 1970, but the bulk of this document was a place. And I think that we were just so reluctant to throw away these old ways of doing things and looking at the future that was frustrating for me, and I know it is for others as well.
Yeah. I'm hearing that. And so when you make an MOU change, let's say, or you accommodate one, building on this conversation, I noted in the document, it says one year, but can the activity that occurred under an MOU be modified under another MOU? Does the change, can the change become permanent without a lot of activity around it? I mean, how does that, how do you evaluate the impact of the work done by the MOU? If you went into, I guess I didn't catch it all, but that would be what I, my curiosity would be that if there's obviously, or if there's an intention to implement an MOU, and how are you going to measure its impact and effectiveness outside of the traditional KPIs, perhaps? And then with that, how do you accommodate whether or determine, can that MOU be incorporated into a permanent activity or change, if any of that makes sense?
President Sullivan, that makes, that makes complete sense. That was our, our thought process as we worked through this. We captured much of that. So we saw the memorandum of understanding really being a tool that allows us to respond timely as more urgent issues arose. If you, in Section 6.1.1 in Enhanced Variances, this is, this is a subset of tool within that was, we saw as really more proactive. And so in that, we outlined a process by which this innovation could move forward and be piloted, and to be, to actually be allowed to be piloted over four consecutive semesters, not counting summers, and then a process to capture data so that the strategy, the activity could be evaluated and then be adopted based upon the data it demonstrates to be effective in its, in its application. The process outlines that ability, so to collecting the data and the valuation piece, and then the opportunity for that to be extended or embedded. It also allows for innovations that are done within a grant, because often when we get a grant, that's a longer period of time, that it can, the variance, innovation can be applied over that grant period, as well as outlining a process, as Mr. Sarr had mentioned, the concern about a process that deters from innovation, really trying to outline that the process would just ensure that the innovation was completely thought through, that all of the checks and balances had been reviewed, and then that would be forwarded to the Chancellor and then to the Board for review as part of this policy document. So what we were hoping in building Article VI, specifically 6.1 and 6.11, that we, that these tools would provide greater flexibility and allow for longer terms and the ability to really build in a regular evaluation and then adoption for effective strategies.
Thank you. So rather than me ask further questions, Mr. Sarr, do you have any further questions before I move on?
Well, not really. I just, if I was going to be a faculty member, I would want the opportunity to be a clock hour faculty member, where I could move with the, with the flow, opposed to having the bureaucracy behind this. And I apologize to everybody involved, but it is bureaucratic. It's just, I don't see the need. And I get consistency and all the other elements of it, but our students are not the same students we had, and I think we're still trying to fit them into that same block. It would be real important, and maybe if nothing else, to include students, maybe the Student Senate, on the approval committees for the MOU and for the extension of whatever the MOU was written for. And I'll, I'll leave it from there at that point.
So given that we've talked about 6.6, 6.1, and 6.11, at this point, does any other Board member have a comment on this particular piece before I go down the list for other questions?
Yes, I have one.
Okay, Mrs. McGrath and Ms. Nguyen.
That was Dr. Thor, I think.
Oh, I can't tell sometimes. Okay. Whoever does.
I think, Dr. Thor, do you want to go first?
All right. It wasn't me, it was Mrs. McGrath.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's what I, thank you. All right. Mrs. McGrath, what is your question?
I'm in complete agreement with Mr. Sarr. I really don't like this document. It makes some people more important and more, and you understand why if all this being able to adapt is so important, why not put it in the current document? I feel that this is very restrictive on a great number of our employees, and I really don't like it.
So any other comments on Six, on Article VI?
This is Mrs. Nguyen.
Yes, go ahead.
Just was, I just, this is a note I wrote myself, and I'm looking at my notes, and I apologize, but some colleges have service faculty running their centers for teaching and learning, teaching teachers how to teach with technology. And I just, I had a question about that as it relates to this, and I just wanted some clarification. I hope that, I just didn't unders.
If your question pertains to 6.6, Article VI at this time, go ahead and ask it.
I think that, you know what? I think that was back on page six. Never mind, just ignore me, and I apologize.
We'll come back to you then. All right, so if there's no other discussion... Welcome back to you then. All right, so if there's no other discussion, I would say that there are some salient points to flexibility and also thinking about shared governance and thinking about stakeholders' investment. You know, the idea that students might be part of some process is certainly not a bad idea and providing that adaptability. Particularly as I'm thinking through the transfer, what I guess is being termed in the world, digital transformation for learning, that it's going to require some more of that adaptability, adaptability and flexibility. So wanting to ensure that Six, Article Six, 6.1 and 6.11, all of those work together so that it can be a more dynamic process around flexibility and accommodation, as opposed to something more staged, I would make that, that comment. So I'm going to move us off of that discussion and appreciate it. And then move to you, Dr. Thor, for any questions on the document.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Well, that was easy. Okay. Ms. Nguyen, do you have any comments then? You were talking about Page Six, not Article Six? Is that what I understand? Mrs. Nguyen, your turn. Okay, she's not unmuting. All right, I'm going to move back to you, Dr. Norene. You said to come back to you, so here we are.
Well, thank you. Yeah, just, Mr. Sarr was kind of bringing up a point that reminded me. What are some of the key areas that are in concerns of the adjunct faculty? How are they folded into this, this agreement?
President Sullivan, Dr. Norene, thank you for, for that question that, you know, we, this, this is a very, that's a very new aspect of the faculty agreement to have adjunct faculty and residential faculty in the same document. In many cases, what we found was that there is more collaboration built in. So we, we ensured that the benefits and rights of faculty that existed for residential faculty in terms of the academic freedom, in terms of intellectual property. And Articles Two and Three, for example, covered our adjunct faculty as well. When we looked at the, the roles for, so for example, involvement in innovation in Article Six, that that was inclusive of adjunct faculty in the decision making. There was greater involvement of adjunct faculty in our leadership in Article Seven. As we, as we look at the, the election process, involvement in review of division chairs, department chairs, and other faculty, department level leadership. The, there's more insight, feedback in that process for adjunct faculty. There is a, a new document, well, pulled from the adjunct faculty handbook in Article 19, which speaks to the professional developments, so really building in opportunities to assist in the growth of our adjunct faculty. That, and then really looking at how that would be captured as well within Article 10 in a compensation model that would incentivize and then reward the further development of our adjunct faculty as they, as they commit in the work they do for our colleges. So those are some examples of how they've been incorporated in the, and really more involvement in the decision making and, and then in the inclusion in the other aspects of the rights of faculty that existed for residential faculty.
Thank you.
Dr. Norene, do you have any other questions?
Well, just, just on the, on the, on the peer review, the, the part process, what were some of the changes made with that?
President Sullivan, Dr. Norene, I am actually going to call upon one of my amazing colleagues, Stacy Smith, on our faculty, our fac team, to talk a little bit about that.
Thank you.
Sure. President Sullivan, Board Chancellor. So the PAR-PARC process was clarified and reviewed by a PAR-PARC task force that worked through the summer to kind of look at the process for probationary faculty. And the, the result was, were a few changes. And one of the big ones was a clarification of the role of the PAR-PARC process as more of a development process instead of a punitive punishment type of process, really using it to help probationary faculty grow. And with that, the definitions of the different levels of renewal were clarified. So when a probationary faculty finishes, let's say their first year, they turn in their work, their IDPs, and they get a decision from the president of the college. So if it's renewed, it's just renewed, and then the probationary faculty moves forward to the next year. The next option is renewed with development, which used to be called renew with concern. And so to focus on the development of the probationary faculty, the terminology was changed. And with the renew with development process, there was a specific outlined process included into the article. And I think this is a really helpful tool for probationary faculty to be able to, to show their growth. And in the process, there's a reflection component, there's a mentorship component that that probationary faculty will go through for the following year and really just reflect on how they can grow and how they can meet the needs of the rubrics that are set up at the, at the colleges. And that reflection is sort of folded into the following year's plan to show that the probationary faculty did grow. So those are some of the main changes that happened with the PAR-PARC process. Again, just focusing on development as opposed to more punitive punishment process.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions, Dr. Norene?
Just had it muted. No, that, that was it. I appreciate the, the focus on development for the faculty instead of the punitive part. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to come back, Ms. Nguyen. My impression was you had a question. So it's your turn. So what, take us away.
I have a question on something different, not on what we're talking about. So, but I, in what Mr. Norene just-
Different as in the doc, not in the document?
No, 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 no. We were on a certain, I have a question based on Dr. Norene's last question. If I could just get-
Yes, please, go ahead.
Thank you. So people are on probation for five years, correct? And then each year they're evaluated while they're on probation. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And, and how are they reviewed at the end of each year? Who reviews probationary teacher? What, what's, what structure is that?
So the probationary faculty, depending on their year, they get either one or two administrative evaluations from, that could be the VPAA, that could be the dean or an occupational dean. And they get one or two of those a year. It depends on how far along they are in that five years. They're also evaluated by their chairs. And the chairs also do student evaluations as well. So those three components are compiled into the overall evaluation. And the probationary faculty gets that, those evaluations and rights of reflection in their and their individual development plan, their IDP, to show that they've reflected on it and look at areas of growth. So that's the basic evaluation. But also, the whole IDP plan is, also looks at service that the probationary faculty has done and any other committee work, special projects they worked on, as well as a mentorship piece where they're working with and appoint a faculty to, on just learning how to teach better, right? Learning how to instruct and whatever they want to work through. So that IDP is, is reviewed by the PARC team. And this is just a team made up of the faculty developers on, on the campus and other faculty, the VPAA, various individuals on the, on the college campus. They review the IDP and they make a decision on whether that, or recommendation, I should say, whether that probationary faculty should be renewed, renewed with development, or not renewed. And then that recommendation is sent up to the college president who makes the final determination. And as a probationary faculty myself, we're also supported by our faculty developers throughout the the year. We ask questions and get professional growth in different ways, just so we can continue to, to learn and be of service as well throughout the district.
And, and so this is, the way that this is designed is to support faculty in correcting things that are not working and giving them credit for things they're working on. If we have a group of students, let's say, that are really unhappy with a faculty person, and they, and that's part of this, right? They, they get to give reviews and, and if some, what, what weight do we give to our students who are evaluating the faculty? So does that, does that carry a certain weight? How important is, how, how much do we care what our students think?
Good question. No, I think it, it depends on the situation and the gravity of what the students are saying, right? Definitely there's some weight. It's not the only determining factor, because, you know, students may be gruntled about, let's say, the this past change with COVID and moving online. Well, that's out of the faculty. The faculties, there's nothing they can do about that. So I, I think it depends on the gravity of what students are saying. The administration at the colleges, they see those evaluations. So, you know, that's something they can take into consideration when making that, that recommendation on renew or renew with development.
And if, and if they, and if it's not to renew, and let's say a president says, I don't want to renew this, does that faculty then have the ability to go to a different college inside our system if someone else wants to take them on? Would that be allowed?
The faculty agreement does not prohibit that from happening. So I, technically, that could happen. If another college wanted to pick them, pick them up, yes.
Okay. So, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I see, President, Mrs. Nguyen, it would be, so the faculty member could apply to another open position at another college, but the process would not transfer the faculty to a, to a different college.
Okay. Good to know. I appreciate that. And thank you for clarifying that. I think, obviously, we want, we have amazing faculty and we want to continue that. And if someone is not meeting the standards, I, I think that this is a critical component, that we do everything we can to support them. But if at some point, they have one year, two year, three years of not meeting standards, that there's a, I'm glad we have a five-year program. I think that's prudent. But I, I also want to make sure that if someone is not following the plan and not doing what they need to do, that we as a college have an opportunity to, to look for other faculty for that role. And, and not like I want to go and fire a bunch of faculty, I don't. But I want to make sure that their commitment to us is the same commitment we're making to them. And it sounds like we're doing a lot to support them in their role. I also want to make sure that we have the ability to terminate someone if they're not performing to those standards. So, thank you. Thank you for your response.
You're welcome. And I will just mention, there is also the administrative evaluation process as well. If there are employee issues, right, not showing up to work or things like that, there's a separate process that's outside of this that would, that, that process would happen versus this PAR process.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Nguyen, do you have other questions regarding the document at this time?
Anything in the document?
Anything in the document. It's your time.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. So there was another thing. There's another part of the document, and I think it's on page eight and maybe paragraph eight, and I apologize that these are handwritten notes. And it says, "In residence, in order to meet the professional obligations and expectations of residential faculty, a consistent, equitable and reasonable availability of time spent at the college in residence is necessary." So the question is, who determines what is consistent, equitable and reasonable amount of time for a faculty member to be on campus? So I think that the language is kind of inconsistent and vague, and I think we need more specific language on this. Are faculty expected to be on campus 30 hours a week? Five hours a week? I realize right now we're COVID, so nobody's on campus, but I'm hoping that there's a day when we're all back on campus. So accountability, I just think it's important that we know what those expectations are. I think 30 hours a week is reasonable, but, and I don't know if that used to be a standard. I had asked questions to other faculty about this. Many people, obviously, everyone's working from home now, but I've heard that people started saying, well, I'm going to work from home, arguing that their students were, that they had online students. And I think that just because your students are taking class online, I think our faculty should be on campus. Again, it's moot right now, but I've heard that we have faculty that never come to campus. So to me, that's like, we have very expensive adjuncts essentially, and I think that that practice should not be allowed. And I'm, I've had some complaints from chairs that can't get faculty to come to department meetings because they don't come to campus on that day. So I think that there should be requirements that if you are a full-time faculty, that you go to your chair meetings, that you, that you're on campus so many hours per week. I leave that to you guys because that's your thing, but I think there should be some more specific language in regards to that area. That's all I have. Thank you.
And President Sullivan. President, Mrs. Nguyen, thank you. Yes, the language there, the in residence is exactly to address the, the interest that you expressed, that, that our residential faculty have a physical presence on campus. The, the, the broader definition as presented is in recognition of the very differing needs between programs. So for example, some of our current technical education programs in residence would be daily, could be daily and, you know, most of a day every day in support of that program. So there are other programs that are built to be more of a hybrid in meeting student needs. And so there, but while that flexibility is there, yes, very much, I could say, as a, as a college president and as a member of the faculty, we very strongly believe in that in-residence portion for our faculty. And we anticipate as we return from the pandemic, that our faculty will be returning to our campuses as well.
And that everyone will have to return. No one will have an exclusion or exception, except maybe if it's medical? Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct, correct.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Peterson.
All right, any other questions then?
No, I'm good. Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan.
You're welcome. I had a question, and it also came up in the last workshop, or work session, one called these workshops. And it was raised by Mr. Sarr about the document's purpose and who's it for and all that. But, but one thing I do want to talk about as we think about the system and then this specific agreement as it is part of the system. And that is, each system has a mission, has values, et cetera, et cetera. And I will acknowledge out loud that we haven't done recent or strategic planning or attention to the mission as it exists. that we haven't done recent or strategic planning, or attention to the mission as it exists now. And though that was an intention for this year, it didn't happen, it certainly has to be a priority for, as we move next year. So could someone on your team answer, to answer the question, taking this document and the use that it would be, is designed for, to give structure to the faculty practice and process, how would, how does this support the mission of the district as we know it, i.e. being student-centric? And can someone tackle that for me, please?
President Sullivan, I'll take that first tackle, and then see if any of my colleagues would like to add the, the, we are, we are a learning organization. And so our greatest asset are our people. And of course, as we look at the learning that occurs in the classroom, our faculty, residential and academic faculty are critical to fulfilling our mission of ensuring the highest quality of, of instruction, and to ensure that the, the correct environment exists for us to be able to, to meet those learning competencies in preparing students for transfer, moving into the workforce, and serving in their civic responsibility in our communities. So this document really provides a structure that, that attracts strong faculty into our programs, that gives them some sense of consistency and understanding of what that works, that work, the conditions will be, that, that allows for faculty to be able to focus on learning, not worry about these other aspects of employment that can sometimes distract in other systems. So, so we see the faculty agreement really as being a way of simplifying, of making it easier for faculty to focus and be effective in the classroom, and then creating processes that allow us to work through challenges or opportunities as they emerge, again, so that we can remain focused on our students. And then that's what you'll see in, in this document, many of those important, but behind-the-scenes conversations around benefits and other structures for faculty. You'll see our processes around, how do we address issues as they emerge? How do we respond innovatively? How do we work through conflict or other, other challenges? How do we position ourselves to continually grow and be the best faculty and the best instructional programs in, in the state and in the nation? So that's, that's how we see this document as really supporting us and allowing us to stay focused on our mission, which is really our students and their learning, and that, that impact on the health, health and vibrancy of our communities.
Thank you. Anybody want to add to that? That was quite articulate.
No, I will, this is Dana.
Yes, go for it.
And Dr. Peterson, thank you. You did a great job of answering my question from last week, and what's in it for us. My concern is that it's somewhat, I won't call it, maybe the best way I can do this, one-sided. It really does a job of making things consistent, as I said before, and taking some of the things that faculty members don't need, spend too much time on, they want to spend their time in the education of our students. But we also know that there are individuals who are faculty members, both adjunct and full-time, that struggle. Maybe it's with technology, and the fact that they've been there for 30 years, and they just haven't grasped the technology that today's students are used to. And so I just want to make sure that, we got, with what you said, I agree with that, and it's an important part of this document. But I think in this document, we kind of give those individuals who aren't meeting the needs of today's students, some barrier that they're, oh, safe, even though they, they don't meet the needs as well as we expect them to, as you just defined. This gives them some safety that, even though that's the case, they are going to be protected. So, and that's been around for a long time, in every document that I've ever seen under these circumstances. So it's nothing new. But that doesn't mean it's right. And so I think that we need to make sure, just as you stated, that our faculty members are actively meeting the needs of our students and the community, and, but those that aren't, need to be helped, if at all possible. But if that's not working, just as it might be for a person who's been there less than five years, still in front of our students and not doing the job that we expect them to, and there's very difficult to do anything about that under this agreement. And so, and I've said this for a long time, too, as have others prior to me, that it just is typical that we want to protect everybody, but not everybody should be protected.
President Sullivan, Mr. Sarr, the, you know, I, I think we would, we strongly agree that, that we, that we want to be the best in all of our classrooms. One of the areas in this updated faculty agreement that we did make significant additions to is Article 21 in progressive problem-solving and corrective actions. This actually provides a much clearer framework for, for department chairs, division chairs, for deans, other academic administrators, to be able to, to work through concerns as they arise. So to provide opportunity for growth, but then when growth is not realized, to provide opportunities to address the behaviors or other challenges that are detrimental to the learning environment for students. So we, we do, we, we did hear your concerns, as you had previously mentioned, and took them seriously as we tried to clarify this progressive problem-solving corrective action section, to be stronger, and a more useful tool as issues arise.
So one, one comment I have building on that, or shifting from that, again, I'll go back to the idea that the district did not, or has not done a significant strategic plan, leaving with some very definitive goals from the board, and then moving into the community, by that I mean the system community, in order to identify strategic goals moving forward. And as that happens, there may need to be some adaptability in general to, to different things. As we discuss KPIs, we look at value propositions, we talk about the use of data in new ways in this digital age, et cetera, et cetera. So we put this agreement forward, it passes, and then there's some bigger construct around the, the systems in terms of goals, et cetera. How adaptable is this entire agreement in your mind? And how does it represent, then, a true investment in shared governance?
President Sullivan, the, the work we did in response to the board's request for a new document and pulling things together, it happened in a very tight timeline. Normally, this type of work, we would work on a couple articles over a year, where we would see an iterative process. And so we anticipate, as we move forward, that as we wrap up this year, and we start training the adoption of the faculty agreement, that we would then establish our areas of focus for next year, and they would be a more focused approach. The, our work has been, through this process, has been committed to interest-based problem-solving, and really, with the investment of our academic faculty, residential faculty, and our administration, that we find decisions that support the interests of all constituents, and are in the interest of our students moving forward. So this document is, within the timeframe we have given, is our best effort and our commitment to, to, together coming up with a sound foundation for the work we do moving forward. We, it's also built, as we look at Article 25, it outlines that we would continue that level of collaboration and shared governance in the updating, and, and further iteration of this document.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you very much. You know, I don't know if we're completely finished going through the entire process of this document. We certainly have two board members, two new board members who are coming on board, and we haven't given them enough to offer any comment, though it's possible they would be needing to vote on this. But, so I don't know the exact timeframe, but for the time being, board members, do you have any other questions for this evening? Let me ask that first. Do you have any other questions for this evening on this discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Mrs. McGrath?
Dr. Peterson stated that serving the community is one of the jobs of the faculty. I don't know that we've ever had that before, and I don't know what purpose it serves. And I don't understand why in the world this would be, I don't know if it's included in the document. Apparently, my copy of it didn't quite make the move, and I'm not sure where it is. But I really don't understand why we tell people what they have to do with their free time as serving the community. And I'm kind of unhappy with that one also.
We'll make sure that you get another copy. I'm sure Elsa will be glad to, to see that you get another one. So you can take another look at that. Thank you for your comment. Any other comments, board members? Being none at this time, then, I want to thank you again, Dr. Peterson, and the entire FAC team, and all of those folks who put time and effort into this document, not just the document, but the entire process. And expect that there may be another round of workshop. We'll have to contemplate what that looks like and when. But thank you again for that. And with that, Dr. Gonzalez, do you have any closing comment on the work session?
President Sullivan, I would just add that, you know, at times when we will focus on areas of this agreement, and we spend some significant time on how we deal with faculty members that, that might be perhaps not given 100% to the district, or 100% to the students, or a combination of the two. And I would just like to point out that that's a very small fraction of our faculty, and, and if, if that truly exists. And so I would just like to say that it's, fortunately for the Maricopa District, we're well-known for excellent teaching, great programs across the country. And I just want to commend those that come to work each day and do their jobs, and never have to find themselves in some of these articles of this FAC group, or the, or the previous RFP. So I just think it's important to say that, because sometimes these conversations will focus on what could be perceived as negative, and as a blanket statement to all faculty, that we're looking for some way to make it easy to get rid of faculty. And when in fact, I know that's not our intention, there is, there's always interest in doing that. Our, our problem employees, whether they're faculty, whether they're staff, or whether administration, college presidents, or even a chancellor for that matter. So I just thought I needed to say that. And so I appreciate that, the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
You're welcome. Well, my, my understanding of any business is you recruit and retain, you recruit the best and you retain the best. And that's the goal of any quality organization, and I expect that's where we are as well. So with that, I'm going to close and adjourn the work session, and I'm going to give us five minutes. It's 5:05. At 5:10, I will convene the agenda review for the November 24 meeting. So it gives us a few minutes. But board members, stay online. Don't go away. This is our connection to the agenda review. Thank you.